Hello, everybody. Just a brief reminder before we start today's meeting. If you do have a public comment on ordinance 02-02-22, there's a sign up sheet in the back as well as for citizens' comments, there's a sign up sheet in the back, too. So just make sure you sign it. It helps us with record keeping and helps us spell everyone's names correctly in the minutes. All right. Annie, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you could please call the roll.
Mayor Paulin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Setula.
Here.
Councilwoman Grunbein.
Here.
Town Manager Hicks.
Here.
If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. The first item on our agenda today is the approval of minutes. February 7th, town meeting minutes, and February 23rd, work session minutes.
May I make a motion that we approve the minutes as stated?
All right. Second?
Third? Second. Sorry. Sorry.
All right. All in favor of the approval of the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes are approved and can be found on the town's website under the Minutes tab under Government. All right. Moving on to reports of officers, boards, and committees. First, the permits report.
Building use and occupancy and sign permits issued during the month of February 2022. February 2nd, Fence and Deck Connection Anchor Point Subdivision, six permits, decks on townhomes in the Anchor Point subdivision. February 2nd, McGee Fence for Barry Pickett, 206 Susan Drive for a fence. February 2nd, 22 Rivers Edge Terrace for a fence. February 9th, NVR Inc., Ryan Holmes, 151 through 165 Seldovia Drive, eight new townhome units. February 9th, NVR Inc., Ryan Holmes, 99 through 107 Caswell Drive, five new townhome units. February 9th, Fence and Deck Connection Anchor Point subdivision, four permits, decks on townhomes in Anchor Point subdivision. February 9th, Felder Grant, Lot 80A, Poplar Lane for a fence. February 11th, Higgs Construction for William Robel, 305 Bland Drive, addition on single-family dwelling. February 16th, Renewable Energy for Vernon Smith, 11 Oak Street, solar panels. February 16th, Solar Energy World for Jordan Warren, 24 Madawomen Court, solar panels. February 18th, Bernard Goldring, 4840 Strauss Avenue, change of occupant with no construction. February 22nd, United States Bomb Tech Associates, 4450 Indian Head Highway, wall-mounted sign. Use and occupancy permits. February 17th, Ivan Young, 4355 Indian Head Highway, Indian Head Auto Sales LLC. February 17th, Ebony Rickenbacker, I apologize if I pronounced it wrong, 207 Chickaloon Place for a deck. February 2022, NVR Inc., Ryan Holmes, Seldovia Drive, decks for eight new townhomes. February 2022, NVR Inc., Ryan Holmes, Chickaloon Place, 10 new townhome units. No temporary use and occupancy permits, no demolition permits. There was a grading permit February 24th. Christine Bott, 26 Madawomen Court, tree removal. Sign permits. February 22nd, United States Bomb Tech Associates, 4450 Indian Head Highway, wall-mounted sign. And there were no temporary sign permits.
Thank you, Annie.
No problem.
All right. Moving on to the finance report. Ginger?
February 2022. Beginning cash balance, $881,826.35. Total revenues, $761,498.98. Total expenditures, $334,684.15. With and ending cash balance of $1,003,8641.18. Total investments, $380,187.77. Any questions?
Thanks, Ginger. Moving on to Town Manager, Code Enforcement, and Planning Commission reports. Ryan?
Town Manager's Report, February 2022. Boardwalk, 99% of the work is complete. Parking area has been poured. Striping is expected to take place this week. 600 linear foot of wire to be installed on the Riverwalk side this week as well. Stabilization and mulching to follow. Emergency call boxes to arrive in the next few weeks. Restrooms on the Village Green, project to begin once the boardwalk is complete. Leaf vacuum, that season has concluded. Once again, that season has concluded. The town will be adding an electric car charging station to the Village Green Pavilion parking lot in the near future. Construction is complete and the station is commissioned. That car charging station is fully operational. Comprehensive plan update and zoning ordinance update. We are waiting for a response from Maryland Department of Planning. The town is working on next year's budget. East Poplar Stormwater Design, the preliminary design is complete. We are awaiting permit approval. Buffer Management Plan in Madalee Park. The draft plan is being developed. Submitted clarifications to Critical Area Commission. The meeting will be held on, I'm sorry, we held a meeting onsite with Critical Area Commission on February 2nd to discuss the bamboo removal. Buffer Management Plan submitted last month. Waste water permit application. That application was submitted to MDE. We are still awaiting comments and/or approval. Our water allocation permit has also been submitted to MDE and we are awaiting comments and/or approval. And paving repairs to take place all over town within the next few months. Code Enforcement Report, February 2022. The town issued 26 notices of violations during the month. Four rubbish and garbage, seven rubbish and garbage fines, two rubbish and garbage citations, two rental license violations, four property maintenance violations, three property maintenance fines, two property maintenance citation, one untagged vehicle violation, one untagged vehicle fine. The town also performed 36 rental inspections during the month and we also cleared 17 violations.
Thank you very much. Moving on, I don't see anyone from the fire department, so we'll continue to move along. Briefings, we have none.
Do you want me to read the police report?
Oh, yes. If you send it, yeah, it'd be all right.
The community police officer was able to send us a crime report. He said crimes against person, February 26th. There was a robbery, Park Square Court. Victim was robbed of his wallet at knife point, then assaulted. A suspect was identified. The investigation has been assigned to a detective with CID. Crimes against property, none reported. There were several reported identity thefts/credit card frauds, however. None appear to be a community issue and are apparently isolated incidents. Quality of life complaints, loud music, there was one, loitering, one, fireworks, one. Landlord/tenant disputes, five. Intoxicated pedestrian, one. Many bike, one. Disorderly, one. Trespass, one. Notes. Community cleanup day is coming. Saturday, May 21st, is a great opportunity to get out and show your support for the town by pitching in to keep your community looking nice. It's also a perfect time to get outside on a hopefully beautiful spring day. Meet your neighbor and meet some of your community officers. Details will follow, but as of now, Charles County Government will be providing supplies such as gloves, trash grabbers, et cetera, and will pick up any bags of trash collected. Remember, with the restructuring of COPS, the new point of contact will be our civilian community coordinator, Mr. Gus Proctor. He can be reached at 301-932-3080 or by email at proctora@ccso.us. If an officer is needed at a community meeting, a request must be submitted through Mr. Proctor a week in advance. The Charles County Maryland Sheriff's Office and Charles County Crime Solvers work together to solve crimes and hold criminals accountable for their offenses. Crime Solvers offers rewards up to $1,000 for information that leads to the arrest or indictment of a person involved in criminal activity. You can submit tips anonymously by calling 1-866-411-TIPS or visiting www charlescountycrimesolvers.com.
Thank you, Annie.
No problem.
All right. Moving on. Sorry, I'm trying to keep up with the chat on here, too. There you go. All right. Moving along, we have no briefings, no presentations or recognitions, no resolutions, although we do have an ordinance, and I imagine that's why a lot of you over here today. So moving on to ordinances 02- oh, it's supposed to be 01-22.
Yes.
Yes. It's all good. An ordinance concerning the purpose of amending the adopted budget to recognize American Rescue Plan Act revenues received and appropriate $375,000 in grant funds for expenditure for a grocery store development. First, in the line of order, just so everyone knows, we'll have council discussion of the ordinance, then public comment. Please write your name on the back table so we can write your name correctly if you're going to speak at the podium. And then go up to the podium, line up in an orderly fashion, state your comment, and then we can grab your information off of the back table. Is that how we're doing it?
Bunny can bring us the list and then we can just go down that way if you'd like. That way you can...
That would work perfectly. Does anyone need to sign the list in the back before Bunny collects it? Yes.
Okay. So it's ordinance 02-01-22, introduced by mayor and council. The date introduced was February 7th, 2022. Date adopted is set tentatively for this evening, March 7th, 2022. If it is adopted, it will become effective on March 27th, 2022. It is an ordinance concerning amendment of FY 2022 budget for the purpose of amending the adopted budget for the Town of Indian Head for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022, to recognize certain American Rescue Plan Act revenues received by the town and to appropriate certain of those grant funds for expenditure during the fiscal year and generally related to amendment of the town's FY 22 budget. Be it enacted by the council of the Town of Indian Head, that the Town of Indian Head FY 2022 approved budget is amended as follows. On page 1 of the town's FY 22 general fund revenue budget, add a new revenue code to read 010-4316, American Rescue Plan Act, and record the amount of $1,462,900 in that account. On page 2 of the town's FY 22 general fund revenue budget, in each of the lines, total unassigned, total general fund, and total report, increase the amount of $1,690,534 to $3,152,624. On page 1 of the town's FY 22 general fund expenditure budget, add a new expenditure account to read 11-5479, ARPA or ARPA, Authorized Expenditures Grocery Store Development, and record the amount of $375,000 in that account. On page 1 of the town's FY 22 general fund expenditure budget, in the line Total Town Council, increase the amount of $60,453 to $435,453. On page 9 of the town's FY 22 general fund expenditure budget, in each of the lines, total general fund and total report, increase the amount of $1,690,534 to $2,65,534. And be it further enacted that the sums and amounts reflected in Section 1 of this ordinance are hereby recognized and appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. Be it further enacted that this ordinance shall become effective 20 days following its adoption by the council.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Annie, or...
Do you want me to read the numbers for what we received beforehand?
Yeah, that would work.
Okay. Thanks, Annie. So before today's meeting, this was before close of business. Mrs. Steele did provide a few more responses that she received, which have been given to the council at this time. But at that time, we had 582 counted submissions in favor of a grocery store/ordinance 2-1-22. That count does exclude any duplications that were found between lists or emails or things like that, just so we would have a more accurate count. 300 are from the Indian Head ZIP code. It could not be determined which submissions are from outside of the incorporated town since on certain lists, it was just Indian Head and we didn't have a physical address because the ZIP code extends beyond the town's limits. So 300 from the Indian Head ZIP code, 280 from outside of town. This does include all submissions noted as in a nearby area, which was around 194, and outside of the area, which was 86 of them. Two were from local business owners. These were counted separately because while they may not live in the town's limits, since they do own businesses within town, they would be considered to have a vested interest. Three people spoke in opposition of the $375,000 budget amendment during the February 7th town meeting, citizens' comments. The town did receive an email in opposition of the budget ordinance as well on March 4th, but that was not counted in the opposition because it was already counted in the town meeting numbers. So that's why that number didn't change. So that's it?
Thank you very much.
No problem.
And I want to thank everyone who submitted comment as well as written comment and spoken comment. It's been fun. We have never had that many comments towards something before. So thank you, everyone, for commenting, giving us your input. It is greatly valued and appreciated. I guess before we go to public comment and I read the names off the list to come up for public comment, any council discussion of the ordinance?
I do want to just second that I think it's great to hear how many people have a vested interest in the Town of Indian Head and actually care about what's going on and making their voice known. I think that's something very important to keep going throughout this and any other issues that we have going on through Indian Head.
I guess as the spoken comment is, is three minutes. So three minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, first of all, welcome and thank you, everyone, for coming. And congratulations to Kacy for being appointed as a councilwoman. Great job there. And then congratulations to Mayor Paulin for his engagement during the time since we last saw you. It is amazing to have. Thank you to all our town staff, everybody, and our public works. Also appreciate media coming here. And even during this COVID time and since last saw you, I am, me and my wife are blessed to have an eight-month-old baby boy in our city. Very lucky to have that. So I've been very honored to represent the residents of this town since 2004. I, too, have been impacted by not having a grocery store in this town. And especially, this is a big deal for me because I also live with my dad, mom, as well as my sister and my nieces. So it's been 19 years that we've had. What I wanted to say was, I started by what Desmond Tutu said. When the missionaries first came to Africa, they said, "Let's hold our hand and close our eyes." So missionaries had the Bible, Africa had the resources. And when they prayed and when they opened, the missionaries had the resources and the Africans had the Bible. And this is significant when I come down to say. Two things I wanted to make clear right off the bat. I am not in opposition to the grocery store pursuit. Grocery store has been also my campaign theme. It is in my brochure. I want grocery stores, but what kind and how? And then also, there was other things that were said that, hey, I have support of Dollar General owners, things like that. It was in Clarity Coffee's website it was mentioned. I do not know the owners of Dollar General. I have never spoken with them. And I wish I knew them. I'm very thankful that the Dollar General exists in the town because that is where I get milk, bread, eggs for my family also. And I love Clarity Coffee because my daughter and I have bonded in Clarity Coffee over the last years since I started going to Indian Head Church as well. So my opposition is down. Our town received $2.8 million in American Rescue Plan. I don't know if you know that or not. Our general fund is just $1.7 million for our town. Imagine, my dad works in Walmart. He makes $30,000 a year even when he was full-time and sometimes extra. That means somebody giving him $50,000. When a windfall of that nature happens, a rising tide should lift all boat, not one. This is not about grocery store. This is about in the Algonquin building, five or six up to, a low-income housing being built. And that is not what is being stated in this ordinance because it has been packaged as a grocery store, this pursuit. And I think that is something that the town residents need to know, and that is what I do. Plus, by design, our government is a weak mayor government. It is not a wish list of either of the council members. We work in conjunction to do that, to that as well. So if we are going to be giving $375,000, what is our stake? Who is going to get it? How it is going to disperse? What is the skin of the town in the game? What is our skin in there? And that needs to be clarified. If you've driven up or walked downtown, you've seen velocity centers. By the way, I'm very proud of our council in the last six years. We have together stood and made a lot of changes. This is, and thanks to mayor and the council, we have made some... The US Velocity Center, we gave them, the entire structure, the town gave them $10,000. US BTA, we only gave them $0. We haven't given them anything to my knowledge as of yet. So we can and we should protect taxpayers' fund. It's a federal fund. And if we do not do that, then we will not be doing our due diligence. And that is what you guys expect. As a public, you expect us to be transparent, to be the custodian of the funds, and to protect and work in the best interest of the fund. The way it is laid out right now, I believe it is not, we need grocery store. I believe it is not laid out that way. So I love capitalist. I have no problems people making, being rich, making money. But what I have problem is using taxpayers' funds to fund the profit of private entity while socializing the risk. And that is what it is going to lead to. We are going to a slippery shore, a slippery road here. And that is one of my concerns that I wanted to express through this. So now we are coming to the end of my portion of the presentation. Thank you, mayor, for allowing me. What I'm saying is, there are things that we can certainly do. How do we make this better? We can still, we still need grocery stores. There is no question about that. The town needs a grocery store. We can fund studies to do it. I was just looking at a site earlier today in the Town of La Plata. And the Town of La Plata here does that in their picture. They just say, hey, this is, we have community, please join us for a community meeting. We will be discussing about the new La Plata Bike Way and the given time and thing. When can we do that? Let's, let us all invite, but please join us in this grocery store thing. Let us invite, you guys all should show up. Let's say, what kind of grocery store do you want? Where do we want it? What? I have no problem. People come, participate, make their voices heard and say, "We want grocery." Yes, I am for grocery store as well. So I would like to them. So and let's have in the committee, the right players, the experts who have run the grocery store, who have operated the grocery store. That would be nice to have. Again, like I said in the beginning, I want to conclude my remark by saying, remember I said when Desmond Tutu said, "When we closed, the resource was on one side, the Bible was on the hand." Similar thing. If there's going to be, so in our case, let us all pray that elected officials here make the right choice, right decision for the people. Don't close your eyes because things might get transferred. Instead of Bible, they are using contract terms these days. So it is non-binding agreement that keeps binding and binding and it keeps getting binding. So we want to make sure that when all is said and done, that Indian Head has the resources, the town has the grocery store, people are happy. Otherwise, there will be oasis for one business, it will be desert for rest of us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ron. Before we move to public comment, I would like to just make a brief statement. I just want to, once again, thank everyone for being here. And thank everyone that submitted public comment. We received hundreds of comments in support of ordinance 02-01-22. And this is something that, you know, the last time a grocery store was in town was when I was four years old. It's no coincidence in my mind that you see the obesity rates within our ZIP code continue to increase. It's no question that you don't have, you know, access to fresh fruits, fresh vegetables, and all of those things. A major part of the congressional legislation that ARPA laid out was to address food disparities. I mean, that's part of the reason why this funding is absolutely necessary. And to be honest with you, Ron, you know, it mentioned affordable housing, but it is not low-income housing. It's affordable. And we can disagree on that all day long, but we have to address food disparities in our community. The amount of families that I see literally walk across 210 on a daily basis to go shop at dollar stores is troublesome. I mean, to have fresh fruits and vegetables is necessary. Absolutely necessary. But I'll, I guess, yield my time. And unless there's any other council discussion, I'd like to move to go to public comment. So first on the public comment.
Brad, before I ask you to add my name to that list, can you answer one question for me?
Absolutely.
Exactly what is the money the town's giving to the Clarity House or the grocery store to be used for?
The development of a grocery store.
The actual grocery store itself?
Well, it originally started as we were building a partnership to build the parking lot in the rear. The 300...
Is it mainly sold for parking?
Essentially, for the development of the grocery store. All right. So the first public comment we have on here is Jamie, I'm sorry, Jamie, I'm not going to be able to say your last name, buddy. But 19 Raymond Avenue, just go to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, townspeople. I'm reading off this because I'll go on and on why I love Indian Head and why I want to see improvement. Again, Jamie Toribio. I live in the town. I have a business and it's based out of the town. Super important to see businesses feed business. I'll start with that. Also, thanking everybody up here at the front table for the opportunity to hear us. Ron, thank you for talking. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's a responsibility of everybody up here to hear everybody in the town, hear our voices, and make the decisions that are best for the town. All right? So thank you for taking on that responsibility. Now, again, it's safe to say we're all here because there's some opposition to the fresh market, Oasis Grocery Store. And if it wasn't, we wouldn't be here. The approval of this market would happen like a lot of other choices. A lot of things happen without a large meeting like this. So it's cool to see everybody here. Anyways, I don't understand why anybody would oppose this opportunity to see the town progress. I ask myself, why would anybody be opposed to having a healthy place to eat lunch? Which obviously, Ron, you've said you're not opposed to a grocery store, which is awesome. But I'd love to have a place to go grocery shopping where I don't have to spend $15 or $20 just in fuel to get to the grocery store. If I can walk or bike to the grocery store, I'm way in favor. The only thing I could think of, why would anybody oppose it? Obviously, there are some allocated funds. But again, sometimes you have to feed a situation to get progression in the town. So I was thinking, what are the three reasons? People that have special interests not to have a market, okay? Not to have this facility. And also, people that are persuaded to be opposed to this situation. And then lastly, for individuals that don't want to see the town improve. I mean, it's huge. If I left anything out, I'd love to talk to anybody that's opposed to having this market and this infrastructure. Anyone that knows me knows I love the Town of Indian Head. I obsess about it all the time. I try to get everybody to move here. I try to get them to run their businesses here. I enjoy all the hidden gems and try to tell people about all the hidden gems of Indian Head. And people look at me like I'm crazy. You know, all my friends, my family, business peers, all those people that are from outside the town see the town as a deserted, rundown, good-for-nothing town. I mean, that's the image from the outside. And who can blame them? The town looks rundown. You got the derelict buildings across the street there, caving in on themselves. And, you know, at the end of the day, the town looks uninviting and has the appearance that it will never improve. and has the appearance that it will never improve. And yeah, again, thank you for what's happened at the bottom of the hill. You know, those are major improvements, but we need an extra step. So, I personally know Indian Head's gonna be awesome. It's gonna succeed. But it's movements like this and the approval of this ordinance that's gonna make it happen. And today, it's all about us letting the town know that this needs to happen. You know, we need things like a fresh market, a grocery store, restaurants, art shops. I mean, those are the kinds of things that are gonna make this town appealing. You know, we've got, we've got a group of people that are willing to take, and though those funds are there, this group has taken a major risk to start this facility and start this grocery store. And it's, it's this kind of development that's gonna give the town momentum. Once this happens, you know, once this investment happens, what happens next? You get that art shop, you get a restaurant, you get better things moving forward for the town. So, you know, I'm just curious to see why there is opposition for that outside, if there's any other reasons. And I don't know who has the votes up here. But anybody that has say to say yea or nay, it'd be nice to hear today, like, yeah.
Well, let's run through all the public comment and then there's a council discussion.
Yeah. And, and Ron, like you said, transparency is big. So bringing up some things that people obviously didn't know about. The housing, the apartments, things like that, you know. The building over there is falling apart. And yeah, this is just the starting line. We help one business get started. The funds for future businesses or future progression is, don't have to allocate that. Nobody wants to come here. You know, if development like this doesn't happen, I'm, I'm ready to take my business out of the town. You know, it's that, that kind of thing, you know. This year, we'll be a multimillion-dollar company. Why not keep us in there and be proud of somebody like our company? You know, if, if the town doesn't progress, this isn't the place for me. It's a place for me to come kayak, you know, things like that. So, you know, if there are any, any other reasons, I would definitely love to hear them and I'm sure everybody else would. My business is the Outdoor Living Company Business Partners over there.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Next on our list, we have Brian Claus, 10340 Taylor's Neck Road.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to address the council tonight. Good evening. My name is Brian Claus and I was born, raised and resided in Indian Head until I joined the Navy back in 1984. Just to let you know, I just have one page of prepared remarks and I'd just like to make a comment. I returned to Indian Head in 1996 after receiving my honorable discharge from the Navy and receiving my bachelor's degree in economics from the University of Central Florida. I started and ran a successful mortgage lending business in Indian Head for 20 years and currently own a number of properties in the town of Indian Head. Indian Head is a great place to live, learn, work and play. I truly love this town. I am here to state publicly, I am a strong proponent of a grocery store in Indian Head. And as Mayor Pollan mentioned, I can remember shopping with my family in Safeway, AMP, SuperFresh. I remember them all. However, the reason I'm here is also to voice my concerns regarding ordinance number 0201-22. As I understand this ordinance, this is increasing the amount previously approved by the town council for grocery store development from $60,453 to $435,453, an increase of $375,000. As I researched more, I found this project is more than just a grocery store. This project also includes affordable residential rental units, the acquisition of the Agonquin Building, the acquisition of two residential properties, all under a public-private partnership entered into by a single stockholder and the town of Indian Head. I've searched the town's website looking for the PPP agreement, the Public-Private Partnership Agreement, and I have been unable to find it. The terms of this agreement should be made public for all to review as large sums of taxpayer money are being used to finance this project. I've attached the loan granted, I sent that in with my public comments, identifying the public-private partnership with the loan received for this project of $805,000 from the Maryland Department of Public Works. I believe the town of Indian Head is being given a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to improve our community with the funding provided under the American Rescue Plan. I also believe these funds should be used for the benefit of all residents and contribute to the sustainability of the town. Our infrastructure has many needs and it is imperative we not squander this opportunity. The reasons we do not have a grocery store in Indian Head are many and have been a headwind for many years. This isn't an issue where throwing money at a problem fixes the problem. As everyone that has tried to attract a grocery store to Indian Head knows, I know the town council has, we have too, out here in the community. It's mostly about rooftops. And Indian Head has less than 4,000 residents. Coupled with changing shopping patterns, the fundamentals for establishing a sustainable grocery store haven't changed, and this is a huge risk with taxpayer dollars. It is my hope that studies and due diligence will be conducted before committing such a large increase in town funds to this project. Some questions I have that I believe should be answered before these funds are allocated are as follows. What are the terms of this public-private partnership? What are the responsibilities of each partner? Who will own the building, the grocery store, the apartments, the parking lot? Who will operate the grocery store? Will it be the same entity that owns the rentals? Does the operator of the Indian Head grocery store have any experience at all operating a grocery? Has the town been presented a detailed business plan to ensure long-term viability of the grocery store as a condition of this funding? Has the town been given a budget to determine if this increase in requested funding is actually needed? Will the funds requested be a grant or a loan? In the event the grocery store closes, will the town be able to recover their investment? In the event the grocery is not successful, will there be any safeguards established to ensure this project does not ultimately become a large apartment complex? Have there been any recent studies to determine feasibility of an IGA, which is what they requesting, that's the International Grocers Association model, here in Indian Head, and if the grocery store is being located in the best location within the town limits? The town owns the old PNC building. That could be a grocery store today. If anybody has been to La Plata, they can get fresh meats, fresh produce, eggs at Hancock Family Farms at 600 square feet, three times. That's a third the size of the PNC building and the town owns it. You could have a grocery store in there today with ample parking, centrally located, so people don't have to walk across Route 210 to buy fresh meat and produce. Would this not be a more central location to establish a grocery store with better foot traffic, existing adequate parking and no requirement for acquisition or demolition? I appreciate all the hard work and the positive momentum we're experiencing in Indian Head. I also truly appreciate you allowing my input on such an important issue. Thank you again. I'd also like to address one other item. After the last town council meeting, Vice Mayor Setula, you brought up the Dollar General. I am not the owner of the Dollar General, but I'm assuming that a business went after the Dollar General property owners because of their relationship to me. The Dollar General is owned by my in-laws, John and Diane McWilliams, who have been nothing but contributors to this community the entire time that they were here in business. That building where Dollar General is used to be McWilliams Ford. And unfortunately, they lost their business during the Great Recession, just like so many other businesses here in Indian Head did. They suffered through five rounds of BRAC, which drove many, many businesses in this community out of business. So that vacant, that building sat vacant for many years. And 15 years ago, when the residents of Indian Head couldn't get a loaf of bread, a gallon of milk, a roll of toilet paper, unless they went into a liquor store or a gas station, the McWilliamses invested $700,000 of their dollars into that vacant building and attracted the only business that would come to Indian Head at that time. And that business that is now in that building has satisfied the basic needs of many of the residents of Indian Head for numbers of years. If you go to the College of Southern Maryland and look at scholarships, John and Diane McWilliams established scholarship funds to teach nursing students at the College of Southern Maryland. And for any business to go on their business social media site and disparage their efforts when they know nothing about what they have said. They are fully supportive of a grocery store as they have been their entire lives. And to disparage anything and say that they're leading opposition to this is a lie and it's disgusting. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, we have Jennifer Legacy, 23 Potomac Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor Pollan and the town council. Thank you for everyone that's here. I want to share some perspective as a new resident of Indian Head and also a community leader. My husband and I planted a church in September of 2020 here in Indian Head, Bridge Church. And in that, our mission is to connect our neighbors and the needs of our community with the unconditional empowering love of God. Well, that's a big thing and that's not anything we took lightly. So before we opened that church, we spent a year and a half, Ryan can tell you, I knocked on his door a lot. But we spent a year and a half in this community asking the community what their needs were, listening. We were actually brought here because we moved from the clinic at Andrews as military-retired couple to the clinic in Indian Head. And we kept hearing all these young, young Navy, young Marines, young corpsmen come in and they're like telling us what they don't have here. And that's what spurred our hearts here in the first place. So I just want to share a few things that, that we have heard the town say over and over and what drew our hearts to this particular project. Because we don't have 20 years of investment here. We have three. And, and we don't have a political statement to be made or a personal statement to be made other than we live here now and we love a grocery store too. But, so as we talked to the military before we came in here, what we continually heard them say, because you know, we want to encourage them as community leaders, but we're also a retired military couple. So we have a vested interest in mentoring young, young military people and making sure that they have what they need to encourage them. They come out of small towns. They want a career. And we're like, are you excited to be here? And they're like, this place is awful. There's nothing. There's not even a grocery store. Like every single comment, there's not even a grocery store. I don't have anywhere to buy groceries for my kids. I need somewhere to go. We just heard it over and over and over. And then we launched, right? We began the church. And one of our efforts was to meet and help, help meet the needs of residents where they were. And our mothers or preschoolers group would meet and have monthly meetings where we would encourage the town to come. We brought in a licensed nutritionist to speak and advertise out as a free event. She's been on the news before, you know, local news channels. We wanted to equip moms for how to make healthy meals for their kids, right? Except that's a problem. Because when you come into an underserved community and you want to teach them how to do something, you have to use the resources that they have available. And the nutritionist came back to us and said, I've been in every store here. So I need you to tell me if you want me to teach them how to make something quick and simple or you want me to teach them how to make something nutritious, but they can't get what they need to make a nutritious snack for their kids within the town. And a lot of them don't have vehicles. So I need you to make a choice for how I'm gonna do this. And that really pierced our hearts, right? We had to deal with that. And so just recognizing that in a food desert, in an underserved community, a lot of us have vehicles, we have resources. Quite frankly, I go shopping at Whole Foods in Old Town a lot of times on Sunday afternoon. But that is not the truth for the many of the residents of this community. The other thing that I want to share is, for us as a church, we meet at Black Box Theater. Actually, let me back up just a second. It's my understanding, because I've done a lot of homework, because as a church, we don't want to support something that we don't really feel is on the up and up. So it's my understanding that this is a $3.25 to $3.50 million project. So this $350,000 for the municipal parking lot is not going to fund departments or ice cream shops or anything like that. This is really to make the parking lot possible so that everything else can take place. And that has been vetted through all the federal and state grants that have already come in, loan, or applications for federal funding that have come in. But in that, as tenants of Black Box on Sunday mornings, I know that Black Box has 90 seats in it. And I know that when we had our one-year anniversary and we had 62 people, we filled every parking spot in Black Box and every parking spot over at the town, to include yours, Mayor Pollan. And as, as the Arts Council wants to continue to bring people in and bring shows in and expand what they do in Black Box, the current parking situation is not sufficient to do that. And so this adjacent municipal free parking lot makes a difference in what we do for Sunday services as COVID opens up and we're able to have more people on site. But it also makes a difference for the town of Indian Head and the Arts Council and what they do in Black Box, because right now the parking is not sufficient to handle that. And then the last comment that I would like to share is I, we coordinate. One of the things that we do locally is we sponsor a lot of programs and first-year teachers at Indian Head Elementary. And so we work with a student coordinator there, Jeannie. And I was sharing, talking to her about this project and what she shared with me in an email was how important this project is, how important it is to get a grocery store. She heads up the backpack program that stuffs food into backpacks for kids to take home so they have food over the weekend when they don't have it at home. And she said, I can't tell you what this effort would mean to these kids who live out of the Dollar General for their food source. And they're not healthy and they're, well, I don't want to, let me make sure I'm not expanding on her words. These kids who live out of the Dollar General for their only food source. With that, I'd also like to thank the Dollar General. Like what an amazing job they do at trying to meet the needs. What they have and what their purpose is, they do incredibly well. But we can't feed people and meet the needs of a community without better and healthier options. And so I just really want to encourage the town. There is nothing that $325,000 is gonna do on a $3.50 million project to take it over the top. But the efforts of the group that have put their blood, sweat and tears in to get this project this far along, to be able to encourage that and create the community parking space and municipal parking lot that's necessary, not just for the grocery store, but for Black Box and other, other events that would take place in the town, Fourth of July, all the things. I want to thank you for leaning forward. I want to thank you for creating a space to have good conversations that are transparent. And I want to highly encourage you as someone who has come in from the outside and spent three years listening and talking to every community group, from other churches to people on base, to the neighbors that we now live next door to because we moved here to be invested in this community. I want to encourage you to vote yes on this project, because I think it's critical to Indian Head moving forward, but more than that, even sustaining and having an opportunity to begin to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Rick Legacy, 23 Potomac Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, town council people. And just thank everyone out there. Obviously, my minutes to speak have been cut dramatically. Brian, I really appreciate your comments. And as you were speaking about the Dollar General, it just made me really think that the Dollar General provides a specific niche or service to the people, right? And how great it would be that a grocery store could come in and the two could complement each other, right? Yeah. But I mean, there, there's services, right, that the Dollar General offers. And then there's, you know, a grocery store would offer healthier choices. But how great that would be for two community businesses to be able to complement and work together to provide. together to provide and build out a community. And so my wife spoke some a minute ago about us planting a church and our experiences from the church perspective. I'm going to speak to you a little bit as a relatively new homeowner and resident of Indian Head, but also as a military retiree. I have deployed all over the world to a lot of third world countries and where fresh food sources, to include water, are pretty much nonexistent. And those people, those third world countries, the best they can hope for is to survive. And you know, when I started thinking about that word survive, we live in the United States and I just, we moved here, as my wife mentioned, to have equity in the community. We believe God led us here. And so what I do believe is that the town of Indian Head deserves more than to survive. It deserves to thrive. And so I guess that's, that's what I would say to everyone tonight and to you, members of the Town Council, that this community deserves to thrive. So thank you so much.
This next one looks like it may have been crossed out. So it says Charles and I can't read the last name, but if it was crossed out, just kind of give me a thumbs up. Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have Marilyn Steele, 8240 Mega Lane, Port Tobacco.
I have to put these on. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council members. I don't have prepared remarks, okay? I didn't think I would have to speak tonight because I thought the 500 voices that would speak through the petition would be sufficient for the council to understand what the town is asking them to do. However, when I came here and I'm hearing the diversion, I'm hearing that the issues that are not accurate, that are not representative of what we're trying to do, it forces me now to speak. And it's one of the things I hate doing most is speaking in front of a whole ton of people. You would not believe that being a lawyer, but yes. So I'm going to try my best not to ramble on because I didn't prepare these remarks, but I want to make sure that I address the things that I'm hearing that are not accurate so that it's clear to everyone what this group is trying to do. I'm hearing that when ministers or whoever it is said people left and people had bibles and other people had the money, and so it's going to be the same thing here. It's going to be some sort of switcheroo. Let me be exceedingly clear. What we asked to do, what we were asked to do is to bring a grocery store to the town of Indian Head by any means necessary. That means we recruited as hard as we could, everywhere we could. I know the town has recruited as hard as they could. It is evidently clear to everyone that's here that the demographics of this area would not support a larger corporate sponsor or anyone else coming to this area. It has to be built by the people of Indian Head. It has to be right sized and fitted for the people of Indian Head. How do we do then, create a project that's sustainable throughout the entire time that it's here and make sure a grocery store is always in Indian Head and not a food desert once again? We build it in a way to make sure that happens. Let me tell you all the answers to the questions you were asking earlier. This project does, is a mixed use of the building that's across the street, the Algonquin and buildings and the properties behind it, the dilapidated, overgrown, dump filled properties that bring down the town. It's meant to renovate that entire space. It's mixed use to support the sustainability of that grocery store, meaning that there's seven workforce affordable, not cheap housing, not pieces of crap, workforce affordable, teachers, police officers, you know, people owning businesses, workforce affordable, people who work hard every day. Just because they work hard doesn't mean that they can't have a decent and wonderful place to live in. And that's what we provide in the properties that I currently own. And that's what we're hoping to put in there. The reason those units are there is that they can help carry the costs of that grocery store and property taxes, insurance, maintenance and everything else. So this store can have the lowest cost possible and sustain itself. That's how a grocery store can stay. That's why those are there, all right? Secondly, this project is going to be employee owned. Let me repeat that, employee owned. No one person is going to run away with $375,000 at any point whatsoever. It's going to take $3.75 million to bring this project to existence. We have put in several hundred thousand of dollars to get this project to where it is right now, to even where it's beginning to be spoken of. Feasibility studies have been done, which helped us to determine how to structure the building so that this can happen this way that it's going through. Now I want to address very personally and very directly, Brian, that no one attacked in any which ways possible the fortitude or the backgrounds of persons. I'm going to finish speaking, please, when I allowed you to speak, okay? No one personally attacked any person of the Dollar General saying that what they don't do or so forth. We said clear, very clearly, we don't understand what is going on, who was opposed this. And maybe it is some process that the Dollar General has maybe interrupted or been upset by this because you yourself ran over to my husband and said, you know, there's going to be groceries in the Dollar General, so you know, we don't want you to lose money in that, not understanding what that was supposed to mean. In the business proposal that was provided to the town in 20, last year, it said very clearly that this grocery store is not meant to compete with any other business in this town. We believe that all businesses should work together and come together and support the town. It's written down. It's in the proposal that was provided to the town so that both businesses will work together and not fight each other going that way. That's the way we meant it to be, that's the way we hope it to be. I keep saying we, let me introduce you to more than I who is standing here. And the person speaking right now real too fast at some points, but it's nine other people who have nothing to gain out of this. They have been providing their voluntary time, effort, expertise and background to building this team to make sure this happens altogether. They come from various businesses, not only in Indian Head, they come from business outside. They have not, we have nonprofits, we have persons from the government also sitting on this team to figure out how best to do this, to bring this product and make sure it's sustainable going down the road. Mayor Satella, I'm a little disappointed and confused that you didn't understand how this process is to work or the answers and the questions because we presented a very detailed business plan, a proposal as well, and gave an in face presentation regarding how this process happens. If you need additional discussion about, we have absolutely no problem providing this information once again to make sure we answer any and every question that there is. The $375,000 for the lady who asked in the back question as well too, is not solely going to just a parking lot, just this grocery store. It is going to develop out, the grocery store portion of its building behind it will be some parking because you have to have parking, I'm afraid, okay? So you have to have parking. But what we've proposed to do as well too is to put in a community garden and a rain garden area that the children across the street can come up and have various types of field trips and plant things and be there and also green space. You know what that does? That helps to sustain the sustainability, community sustainability designation that the town already has. So it adds to the town receiving. The employee owned portion of this is that at some point, when we can get this moving and working well, we turn it over to profit sharing to every single person who's working there so that they have a way out of poverty as well too. Every job here as well will be a living wage. So I'm not sure where we think any one person is going to walk away with any funds. Mark and I are using our expertise, our background, he has over 40 years in food service. I'm not sure how much more experience you want than that. I have over 30 years of regulatory and business experience to be able to run almost anything you can put in front of me. I'm a retired lieutenant colonel from the Army. I can figure out how to make it happen. And I'm pretty sure the team that we've put together of nine persons who come from all versions of business have a very strong way of making that happen as well too. There's a reason that we put together that sort of a team, to make sure that the experience is there, to make sure that we can, we're doing the right thing for the town of Indian Head. I'm going to slow down now just a bit because I did scribble a couple of things down. And I'm sorry I'm rolling on because I noticed two other people who've raised their hands. I know you've asked Vice Mayor Satella, we should do another study. We've done the studies. It's not, it's not, it's not rocket science, it really isn't, or what needs to happen. When the grocery store is being built out, questions will go out to every single person in this town as well too. How do we build it? How, what would you like to see inside of it to make sure it fits the residents of here? So your question about how it's going to happen, that's already been thought of as well, but we're not there yet. Right now, we have to get through to the acquisition, the cleaning up and building out and getting the right contracts to build out this process. I think I've already addressed the low income housing. There's no such thing as any low income, cheap housing happening in this space whatsoever. We have provided, I know we've heard about PNC is a building right now, you can put a grocery store in it right away. What happens with it still torn up downtown and five dilapidated buildings across the street? The town still needs renovation. We still need to attract others to come here as well too. This takes away a substantial amount of that part of renovate, that part of falling down areas within the town. And that's why that space was chosen. It could be developed further and open it better than this. I would have had a better written up presentation to give before you, but I'm responding a little bit too emotional because of the things that I'm hearing right now. All I want to say at the end of the day is that we did not embark on this in any, in any light way, hoping that we were going to be rich off of this. I've lost more sleep and I'm sorely reducing the lifespan, my lifespan, by even engaging in this this far. This was not what we ended up wanting to do. The projects that we have been working on have been fine. The projects we've been building on have been working out fine. But we saw that if we're going to be prosperous and do well in this town, we can't do well when we're looking around and seeing people don't have the ability to do well as also. And so this helps us to help people around us do well as well. And so if this grocery store builds, it'll bring so much more. It brings jobs now. It brings livability now. It brings people to have a place of community now and it's in the right space and the right time. It just so happens that we have the right space and time to be able to do this. Do I want to be able to do it? No, I don't want to. That's the truth. I don't want to, but it's something I'm driven to do. I think it's the right thing to do. And we have had this space for over 20 something years, Brandon, you told us 24 years. Now is the time. Now we can get it done. If you want someone else to lead it because that's what's affecting you, if you don't like that it's me or my husband helping to lead it, please have someone step into the void. That's all we've tried to do is step into the void and bring this forward as best we possibly can. There's nothing personal in this for us. Thank you.
All right. Next on, next on our public comment sheet, Randy Watts, 42 Raymond Avenue.
Hi, I'm Randy Watts and I moved here eight years ago in April, it'll be eight years, and I've thoroughly enjoyed living here. Now, I have the means to get into my car and travel to Waldorf or La Plata or Alexandria to shop and I shop at the family, the Dollar General all the time, I'm in there. I also shop at the Dollar Tree. But I don't go there to get vegetables and I don't go there to get meat. And I don't see how a full grocery store where we can go get produce or meat would have an impact on the Dollar General. There's two entirely different species of businesses. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank all of you for taking on the responsibilities that you have taken on. Because, let me tell you, before I moved here, or actually the reason I moved here was because I was on the board of directors of a cooperative in DC for six years. And shortly after I moved here, somebody asked me if I would be interested in running for city council and I said, hell no. No, no politics, not never, not now, no. So thank you for taking on this thankless job. And you know, Mr. Mayor, one of the things you ran on the first time, which garnered my vote, was that you wanted to bring businesses into Indian Head. And I'm going to make this short and sweet, $375,000. And I appreciate your sincere appreciation of your fiduciary responsibility to protect and wisely invest our money, our tax money. But there's an old saying that if you build it, they will come. If you build it, they will come. We've got all kinds of construction over here with new, and these are not low rent homes. Now, I don't know if we have approached the developers over there about what they think of this or what they would be willing to invest in this. But 375,000, yeah. We had a pipe break at River Park. It was $250,000 just to fix a pipe going from the high rises to the townhouses, like 200 yards. I don't see that amount of money as a deal breaker. But you add 375,000 here, $250,000 there, a million here and a million there, pretty soon you're talking about real money. So I appreciate your fiduciary responsibility concerns. And but if, if you want to attract new homes, new residents, bringing in new income, new taxes, you have to provide something for that. And we have the coffee shop. I was ecstatic to see the coffee shop come in here. I mean, that was the, frankly, the first really attractive, attractive business for young people and for new residents that I saw here before they opened. And I would like to see a new grocery store. I'd like to see a couple grocery stores. I'd like to, I shop at Lidl, I love it, or Aldi, or Costco. We're not going to get those here, but we can start somewhere. And you take one step at a time and you're right about attracting the, building the business so that you attract the people to keep the arts going and other kinds of shops. I'd like to see an ice cream store here. Why not? But you know, another thing is, we've invested a lot of money, from what I understand, on a boardwalk over here that I don't know how many people use it. As the one who has, who started next door Indian Head, I was the first one because I set it up here. I read it with interest and there's a lot of complaints about no parking over there. The people over there are complaining that people come in there to use that out of the neighborhood and park on the streets and they're going to take up their spaces. So you're always going to have complaints, but you can also work on it to work the bugs out. And if you don't start somewhere, you ain't going nowhere. So I am in favor of having new business here. I'm in favor of attracting new and fresh blood and fresh money here. And I think this could be one good way to start it. And I'd also, when I was on the board at River Park, we had a budget probably more than we have here in Indian Head. But several of the members on the board wanted to paralyze everything by doing feasibility studies. And you can spend $30,000, which is 10% of what we're talking about, on doing a study. That's, that's easy. That was 10 years ago. But I would just say, use common sense, use integrity and do what you think is best for us, the community. So thank you. And thank all of you.
Thank you. All right. Charles, did you want to go ahead? All righty. Just please state your first and last name, followed by address. Oh, once you get to the mic. Thank you.
My name's Charles Johnson.
Would you please state your address?
4807 Indian Head Highway, Indian Head, Maryland.
Thank you.
Okay. I didn't come here to speak. I came here because there was a meeting and so forth. But from what I'm hearing and so forth is, I'm not okay with, I'm not a public speaker. So if I say things and you guys don't get it because I'm not a speaker and I didn't come here to say anything, but it just bothered me and hurt me to hear these things that are going on right now. You guys hear me clearly? It bothered me because I was born and raised in Acquahkeet, Maryland, which is just down behind Bryan's Road and everything. behind Brian's Road and everything else, and I've come to Indian Head. I can remember my granddad used to come up here, and we'd go to the AMP that was there and which is taken over by the air, I mean, Navy over here and everything else. They got all these public things and everything else, and everything's going to the base, and there's nothing coming to Indian Head. But the thing I don't understand is, if you get these people from on the base that stay on the base because there's nothing here to do, that is multi-millions of money that would come out and help this society or Indian Head to build itself up. And you go down there, just take a look at, when we walk out this door and whatever else, this is a dead town after 8 o'clock. Why? Why can't we all have something? A grocery store? I do the, like what you're saying, and I'm going to tell you what I feel. I totally disagree with you about the dollar and whatever. I go there because I have no choice. You guys look at what's going on right now. The gas prices are outrageous, and they're going up even more. We've got to, you spend $10 to go down the dead going road just to go to Brian's Road, just to get something to, a cabbage, a tomato. You know, you've got your canned foods and so forth. We've got kids around here. We're not a rich neighborhood or anything else. Matter of fact, I'm a veteran. I am a U.S. Air Force veteran, and I know I've been all around the world, and I also have been with, where I traveled with Esan and whatever, to where we had wound up. We do oil search and everything else on the ground. I've walked hills and mountains with cables on my shoulder just so that we all could have fuel. And this is not okay. This is not okay what you got, what you, man, come on, man. Come on. Let's get real. Indian Head is a good place. It's just been let down by, I'm sorry, by its councils and so forth because they're not standing up for us like they need to. This group over here, Mr. and Mrs. Steele, they're saying about, and I'm getting emotional because they're trying to do something, bringing a coffee shop in here. I don't drink coffee. But that's okay. Others do. A lot of folks do. But what's wrong with Indian Head is that it's old fashioned. It's time for change. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Ms. Vivian? Mattingly Avenue.
Vivian Elder, 88 Mattingly Avenue. I will make a slight comment. I came in here totally for this, thinking we were giving money for a parking lot. Then I heard what Ron said, I heard what Brian said, I've heard what all of you said. None of y'all need to know my background, how long I've been here, whatever. I just want to hear from you, Mr. Mayor. Exactly what is the money that we are going to be putting into this project, the town going to be putting in this project, going to be spent on? And what kind of precedent will this set?
The ordinance says the purpose of amending the adopted budget to the American Rescue Plan Act is grant monies for the expenditure of a grocery store development. So that's what it has to be used for.
What does that mean?
It can mean parking lot, and it can mean grocery store.
So basically, we're giving them the money to do whatever they want with?
No.
Within this, I'm sorry, not just like you guys are going to just go like.
For the development of a grocery.
But yeah, for the parking lot. So where did the houses come into this? And I do understand and totally agree with that that needs to be done, but where did that come into?
So in, I guess, the overall project plan that Oasis has, the, basically rentals subsidize the grocery store itself. Is that my general understanding correct?
That is absolutely correct. The mind is not going toward any, we have funding coming from the HCD, it is not going to housing, it goes right into the grocery store. And we can make it even more specific, that it goes supplying the equipment of the grocery store, so it goes nowhere else. If that is necessary to be done, it is not going nowhere else but to the grocery store.
So what kind of precedence is this set for other businesses coming in?
Given that the federal government gave us $3 million, if the federal government gives us $3 million again, then there's precedent.
I mean, I know the amount of money we're talking about here compared to 3 million is a drop in the bucket. But, like I said, Brian and Ron, they brought up some concerning things to me. So I just want to make sure that, like Ron said, we're not starting a slippery slope here. I mean, I know my comments are not going to change anybody's mind, but I'd at least like to know for my own sake.
And I know from my perspective, if the government gives us $3 million again, then yes, I would be more than willing to provide businesses assistance to, you know, businesses locating in the town. You know, they call it an unprecedented amount of funding from the federal government for a reason. So I think there's unprecedented actions that we need to take to basically reach what we've been hearing from town residents for a long time.
He said when the store closed, first thing out of his mouth, there's no bread in Indian Head. I haven't listened to that for years. So it would be nice to have, I mean, we do have bread, don't get me wrong, he just thought it was funny. But it would be nice to have that option. But again, and my last thing is, Brian and Ron, have either of your concerns been assuaged at all tonight?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. That was our last public comment. Yes. Yes.
I have a question. So my name is Anderson McKenzie. I'm a person of marriage and immigration policy, and I'm also a candidate for district two commissioners. So I live closer to the food line, but my children go to school here, move to school here, small, wood, lackey, et cetera, et cetera. So this is my community. I've been here in this community for about eight years. So I've worked on a lot of topics, but what I wanted to know from you all up there is how the county is supporting. Because from my perspective, there should be more done, and you shouldn't be burying this run simply alone in this, in just an account. And I see the point that these two women made about the role of government and slippery slope. But you all are the boulders on that slope. You say win, and then you respond to what the community wants, and that's what you're doing. So from my perspective, I'm in favor of this. It's sustainable, it's environmentally friendly, it doesn't necessarily expand our footprint by using an existing building. And so from my perspective, I just wanted to know, from the county's perspective, how we can get even more businesses to come in. Priming the pump with a functional, self-sustaining grocery store that has a community garden in the back, oh, wow, that's everything. How can we partner with local and state government to get more?
Yeah, that's a very valid question. Yeah, and, you know, I think, you know, we talk about, you know, different initiatives, and I know, you know, this initiative has been supported from a state, you know, county and town level in terms of different funding. Federal? Federal? Okay. Wow. There you go. See? And it's supported on multiple levels. So, you know, Indian Head's revitalization and different, you know, aspects has been supported on multiple levels. I can't tell you how much, you know, the Department of Housing and Community Development through, you know, strategic demolition funds or community legacy funds has helped over, you know, this time. But, you know, we're always searching for those partnerships, and we're always searching for those new things that are continue to kind of grow economic development in Indian Head and in general Western Charles County, because that's really important for the quality of life for our residents. But, um, yeah, you know, the more support, the merrier has kind of always been, you know, our lane, and we've definitely gotten support over the years. But like we always say, more support, the merrier. So we appreciate you being here. Yeah. Pam.
I just wanted to clarify the question that was asked and how much state funding. And I can tell you, the state of Maryland has been very generous and very helpful to Indian Head. It started with, what, Brian, $50,000 to do that, clear that empty spot. The state, through the strategic fund, gave 1.050 million dollars for the Velocity Center. It gave $250,000 for the Maryland Technology Center last year. It is giving them $500,000 this coming year, and they have given, awarded the Grocery Initiative $200,000. So that's the kind of investment that the state is seeing. They are seeing, we are on a roll, and we're doing it responsibly. And so that is all I wanted to do, was answer the question that was asked.
Thanks, Pam. Thank you. All right. In the effort of time, I guess, in considering, I guess, we threw this list by the wayside a long time ago. But we'll go to final council discussion before, I guess. Yeah, so there are electronic comments being submitted via the chat. I am copying every single one, and they will be a part of the record. As well as the electronic comments that we received throughout the last month will also be submitted for the record. In an effort of time, I'd imagine, we don't want to read all almost 600 of them. So each of those will be submitted into the minutes for public consumption on our town website. Does that work with everybody?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Yeah. Final council discussion.
So I did have one question after Ms. Steele spoke. So if the apartments on top of the grocery store do not get rented out, is that going to affect the capability of the grocery store still moving forward?
Do you want me to answer it, Ryan? I can't. I highly doubt that it's possible, but no, the same basis goes on with rent at such a low level, it shouldn't sustain on the way. It just has to make sure it's sustainable throughout the years.
Thank you.
So again, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Sincerely appreciate it. I hope, I was quipping with Mayor earlier just before the start of the session, I'd like to take credit for everybody showing up here. So thank you for that. And then it is important that you guys come participate and have the discussion. I hope you were enlightened, and that is the exact purpose and the nature, is to bring that transparency already during the course of time. Things have changed so much. Somebody started by saying it is for grocery store, then it turns to parking lot, now it's mixed use. So all this information is coming on. So we are, just like you, I'm confused to what it is exactly, because money is fungible, right? And we don't know what the, so if we are saying it's going to be used for parking lot, let's not say it is for grocery, let's call it parking lot as a parking lot, is what I'm saying. If it's a mixed use, let's call it mixed use, is what I'm saying. Saying, let's honestly clarify that for the people. For Jamie, Jane, I think it was Rick, Marilyn, Randy Watts, Vivian, Kesa, Pam, thank you for providing the feedback. And again, my intention is, as a public servant, I am not here to, like, oppose the grocery store. I love grocery store, we need grocery store. Let's do it the correct way. If we are going to be building a parking lot, who is going to own the land? Is it town that is going to, let's have something. When we put in money, we need to get something back, not a promissory note that it is going to be cast sometime in the future. That, the problem with government funding is when it runs out, the project stops. I come from Third World, that was mentioned earlier by Rick. I know what it is like living in Third World. I was even inside my own airport for 45 minutes, they locked me in because I could not bribe them. So that is the kind of country that, I don't want to go down the slippery slope. Because I disagree with Mayor earlier saying, it is leading us to a slippery slope or not. Yes, it is, because how about the existing business that survived through COVID? The whole purpose ARP coming along was to help during the COVID, all the businesses that lost and help them out. What are we doing for these businesses? Where are they? Now, 375,000 somebody is lining up. Next is going to be X, Y, and Z. Where is my money? So I think, I fear that that is a trend that we are going to be setting. So that is the only reason I oppose. And then I have no issue supporting the grocery store initiative per se. I just wanted to state that on record. And I want to thank Mark and Marilyn for their enthusiasm in trying to bring about the people rallying cry, we need the grocery store in town, but we just need to do it correctly, properly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ron. And in my final council comment before I'll continue, I just want to say, the ordinance is very clear. It says to appropriate $375,000 of grant funds for expenditure for grocery store development. That is what it has to be used for, is grocery store development. The ordinance states it. So without further ado, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 02-01-21.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Any, if you could please call a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Grunberg?
Yes.
Vice Senator Tullow?
No.
Mayor Paul?
Yes. All right. Ordinance 02-01-22 is approved.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. Now, before we continue to move on, the citizens' comment sheet is on the back table, so if you want citizens' comments, pretty sure everyone's commented in the room. But if you want to stay here longer, feel free to write your name on the citizens' comments board.
Well, I'd like to say one thing.
Okay.
According to the Treasury Department, and I will have to have all of this stated, who's going to own the building, who's going to own the apartments, who's the rent that we pay to, and we will have to provide all of this. Whatever data you have on the construction, finance, all that budget, all has to be supported and sent to Treasury.
It'll all be public.
There's no problem whatsoever.
Absolutely. All right. Moving on. Petitions, none. Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Announcement of upcoming meetings. I'm going to sound like an auctioneer, guys. Charles County Health Department Walk-Up COVID Testing and Vaccination Clinic will be Mondays, 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the Village Green Pavilion. This schedule is subject to change. Please check with the Health Department to stay up to date on any scheduled changes. The Maryland Vaccine Equity Task Force Free COVID-19 Vaccination will be Monday, March 14th, 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at the Village Green Pavilion. For more information, call 855-634-6829, or visit coronavirus.maryland.gov. A planning commission meeting will be Wednesday, March 16th, 5:30 p.m. on go-to meeting. The Town Council Work Session will be Wednesday, March 23rd, 3:30 p.m. on go-to meeting. CCPL, Charles County Public Library, Public Daytime Star Party with the Southern Maryland Astronomical Society will be Saturday, March 26th, 10:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Village Green Park. Weather permitting, no rain date. Next town meeting will be Monday, April 4th, 7 p.m. at the Village Green Pavilion and on go-to meeting. Stay tuned, we'll discuss that. We're having technical difficulties on the online thing, but we do have lots of comments submitted. Thank you. We have, the Charles County Early Childhood Advisory Council presents Blue Sky Puppet Theater Performing Pigtails will be Wednesday, April 6th, 10 a.m. The Outdoor Theater on the Village Green Pavilion, pre-registration is required. The Town of Indian Head Spring Celebration will be Saturday, April 9th, from noon to 3 p.m. at the Village Green Park. Town Hall and Public Works will be closed Friday, April 15th, no trash pickup. Weekly Food Distribution Events, Lifestyles End Hunger in Charles County, Carrot Cabana Food Distribution and Maryland Diaper Bank Distribution Sites will be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. outside of the Black Box Theater. In His Service Community Ministry Grocery Bag Food Giveaways, 7305 Indian Head Highway, Brian's Road, Maryland 20616, will be the first and third Mondays of each month, 1 p.m. to 4 p.m. Please make sure to check the town's website, www.townofindianhead.org, to stay up to date on any changes to upcoming meetings, events, or holiday closures. Follow us on the Town of Indian Head's Facebook page. Follow us on the Town of Indian Head's Facebook page. All righty. Now, last but not least, we have one on citizens' comments. Charles, it's you again. Did you want to go again?